This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, Steph, are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conchaucan Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Ms. Jeko, if you could do roll call, please.
Councilmember Tuknel.
Present.
Ike, are you on? Um, councilmember Flanagan.
Present.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Sakalowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Should we check for Ike again?
Yep. Councilmember Griffin. Okay, I'll call him if you want to get started.
Okay. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public work session via video conference and your conference call. At this time, I would ask that all participants mute their audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comments section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conchaucanpa.gov. A member of the Borough Administration during the public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behavior during a remote meeting. Borough Council and Administration, thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. The first item on our agenda is land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. For councils' information, these are all this evening information only, no votes required. And I would now turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, thank you. So our first order of business would be the waiver of off-street parking hearing for 319 Forest Street. In accordance with the Borough Code, Borough Council at their discretion may waive parking requirements for commercial uses in the Borough Commercial Zoning District if the applicant can demonstrate that parking cannot be provided on the site and that there is available public parking within 500 feet of the facility. The owner of 319 Forest Street, who is represented by Tom Gravenese, is seeking a waiver for providing off-street parking for a new tenant that's slated to move into the property. This property is a 2,600 square foot lot and the existing building occupies the full footprint of the lot. Therefore, there's no parking onsite and there's no ability to add parking to the site. The ground floor of this building consists of a warehouse space that up until recently have been occupied by an events staging company, but it's currently vacant. The second floor of the building contains several residential units. The applicant is seeking to move a new tenant into the warehouse that would retrofit and customize van interiors. This use is in the same general character as other permitted uses in the zoning district. The applicant has stated that there would be one full-time and one part-time employee occupying the warehouse space, therefore representing a minimal parking demand. So with that, I would turn it, ask if council has any questions. Otherwise, I believe Mr. Gravenese is with us to describe his plans. Okay, Mr. Gravenese, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes. Would you like to?
Mr. Gravenese, if you could form your points.
Say that again? I don't know.
Go ahead, Eric.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yes. Do you, would you like to, you know, maybe present to the council what it is that you're looking to move in and why you think that a waiver of off-street parking is applicable for the property?
Sure. Well, the property of 319 Forest, okay, is owned by my two daughters. And the property has been in the family for close to 60 years. And it was used in the past for multiple commercial uses. Electrical contractor, a general contractor, a casket company, if you can believe that. And the last but not least was these party planners who, due to COVID, I guess, went out of business and stuck the girls four months. And Todd Lieberman, the fellow that's going to take over the place, does custom interior to vans only. He'll take, normally drive it there, take it inside, and totally customize the inside. I've seen his work and it's quite impressive. Certainly thank you for having this meeting and having me first on the agenda. And I have, I'm tickled to death easy there versus the last people that occupied the property because there was, I don't know, four or five full-time people maybe, and all hours of the day. And what have you.
Mr. Gravenese, I have a question. This is Jane Flanagan, one of the council women.
Okay, Jane.
I was curious what?
Mr. Gravenese.
Did I lose you?
No, I guess I'll go ahead, Colleen. My question would be, are you doing any type of welding or any type of?
Yes, repeat it, Jane.
Okay, so my question for Mr. Gravenese is, will there be any type of welding or any type of fabrication that would cause odors into the area or affect the residents in a negative type way? Or what exactly alterations to the interior would be?
To my, to my knowledge, what I saw was a customized couch, a chair, some paneling, some fancy carpeting. I don't believe there's any welding involved in this as far as anything, anything obnoxious.
Right, it's more Asmed and things like installing upholstery or actually just installing the actual, like, seats and carpeting?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Gravenese, how many employees would he have?
Do I have or does he have? Him, Todd, himself, and I believe a twenty-show-hour, part-time guy?
Would he have? How many employees would he have?
Two.
One.
Okay, and do you know, I mean, I know that doing that is, doing vans like that is complicated. How many vans he would be doing a week?
My only guess is depending on what the people really want, maybe one a week if he can get that done. I have seen these vans and they're quite expensive.
Okay, and? Yes, I'm very familiar. So he would not be putting vans on the street waiting for them to get done, is my question.
No, I believe he does one at a time.
So if he had three vans booked, he wouldn't be leaving two on the street, correct?
No, no, correct.
Okay. Anyone else on council have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gravenese.
I may want to add something.
So the next item is 340 East Seventh Avenue zoning.
Colleen, I think Mr. Gravenese had something to add. Mr. Gravenese, if you want to go?
And I'd like to have the opportunity for public questions. There's an opportunity for public questions.
Yeah.
The public comment section is at the end of the meeting. So, Mr. Gravenese, if you have anything else you'd like to add for council members to do that?
Yeah, well.
Public questions will be at the end of the meeting.
Everybody's talking. I would just like to tell council, who don't know me personally, that I've been a real estate, realtor and broker at Fifth and Maple Streets for 50 years, that I've been in the borough. That's all I'd like to add. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gravenese. This item will be back on council's agenda for for a vote on November 18th. So, Mr. Gravenese, we will follow up with you after the vote is taken by council on the 19th. You'll have your answer on the parking waiver.
When will there be, when will there be an opportunity for public questions?
Thank you, Stephanie.
The public comment section is at the end of the agenda. So if there's anything in specific to any of the applications that you will be hearing this evening, they will be at the end when the president letter mentions the public comment section is open.
So that's when we could ask questions. Thank you very much. I'll wait.
Yeah. Thanks, President Leonard.
Thank you. Yes, the next item is 340 East Seventh Avenue zoning hearing board application. Again, I will turn this over to Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you very much. This, this property at 340 East Seventh Avenue is a 4,200 square foot lot located at the northwest corner of East Seventh Avenue and Jones Street in the BR1 zoning district. The property was recently developed with a single-family dwelling and a detached garage as part of that recent subdivision that occurred along the 300 block of East Seventh Avenue. Jones Street, which is along the edge of this property, has a right-of-way width of 60 feet wide with a 42-foot actual paved roadway. Now, the west side of the road of the right-of-way that butts up against this property has a grass strip, a sidewalk, and then the right-of-way extends another 3.2 feet past the edge of the sidewalk. And that is the common property line with this property. The applicant is seeking to construct a three-and-a-half-foot-high retaining wall up to the back edge of the sidewalk that would extend from the house to the detached garage, intention being to level out the full extent of the yard. This wall would be located within the Jones Street right-of-way. Per the Borough Code, Section 809, all walls and fences shall be outside the legal right-of-way. Therefore, the applicant is seeking a variance to allow the wall to be constructed up to the back of the sidewalk and within the Jones Street right-of-way. So I would ask if questions, if council has any questions now. Otherwise, we could turn it over to the applicant for them to present their case. Yeah.
Thanks, Eric. Mr. O'Hanlon, are you on?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. O'Hanlon, if you'd just like to?
Does anyone on council have any questions?
Colleen, there's a, there's a delay on, on, on your end. I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's not lining. I don't know if you want to try to use your phone as opposed to the computer?
I could try that. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. O'Hanlon, I know that you're on. Is there any other information that you'd like to provide for council consideration?
Yes, and thank you for your time this evening. The reason why we're looking to do this, one, obviously, is to, for the safety of our children in, in the yard because it is a very, very sloped yard. Also, at the time, we relocated from being in the borough over at the Grand Condos to create a single-family home, you know, to, to remain in the borough. And, and part of the process was that by going with the corner lot, we were advised that the property line actually went up to the sidewalk, which is why there was a premium on the lot. And without that additional three feet, it actually is in line with all other, all other seven lots to where it would not be larger. So that was, that was part of it. And then, and then the other part with the, the reason for the retaining wall is in order for them to properly level out the yard for the, for the safety, obviously, of, of children and, and the ability to, a swing set that was supposed to go in there and things for the children, it really would not fit. And the dimensions of the wall block, it's 12 inches of depth. So that would actually, that would actually eat another foot into the yard that really would not, you know, be able to properly use the space, you know, for, for the antenna of having it for the children and to level it out. Also, upon looking at the other, you know, in the area there, Ninth and Wells goes right up to it, 10th and Jones, and even right behind, literally right in the back of our garage at Eighth and Jones, the, they're actually, well, it's a combination of fences and retaining walls go up and go up within a couple of inches of the sidewalk. So I, I think it would still keep the same, same uniformity of the neighborhood. And, and the wall block that is being used has already been used on other properties within Phase 1 of Foundry Way, so it would be consistent with the neighborhood. And, and I have also been advised that the same wall block is being used for the future Phase 2. So everything would be consistent and uniform in the neighborhood.
Eric, does that go right up to the pavement? Or where's the pavement on this? I see the grass. And then Jones Street. Where's the pavement?
So if you were to look at, yeah, so if you were to look at, there'll be the road.
Okay, yeah, I know where we are.
And then from the curb to the sidewalk, I believe it's 3.2 feet, then there's a five-foot sidewalk, and then the right-of-way extends another two, 3.2 feet. Brittany, if you go to the other plan that's in there.
Okay.
You kind of zoom in on that one, so you'll be able to see there's a curb, the grass strip, the sidewalk, and then there's that 3.2 feet between the back of the sidewalk and the, what is the property line of the property? That is the edge of the right-of-way, the 60-foot right-of-way of Jones Street.
Thanks, Brittany.
And that is the line that would be defined as the right-of-way of which the code requires walls and fences outside of.
How high is the wall? I can't tell. How high will the wall be?
Three and a half feet.
Three and a half feet? Okay.
I'm sorry, I congested, so I might be thick. So are, are you saying that you want to put the wall up on the right-of-way so that the right-of-way goes away and becomes part of what you thought was your property to begin with?
Yes.
Okay, so, so see, I did understand, even though I'm off.
Yeah, yeah. And just so you know, if you, if you do continue up the street, like I mentioned, to Eighth, to Ninth, to Tenth, there are other retaining walls and fences that do go right in line with what this would be. And in addition to that, on this part of, of Jones Street there, it does go the sidewalk and then an additional three and a half feet of grass before the sidewalk before the street. So, so there certainly is that. And, and, you know, the, the way that this was presented was, you know, you're responsible for, for taking care of all of this as well. So if that was not, you know, that, that's where that just didn't seem, you know, you know, we, we weren't sure that that was going to come up when we were going through the process because we were supposed to start this the end of September. And then it got delayed with some of this once we found out some more information with the actual plans.
Brittany, can you move it up again, please?
Which plan do you want?
To the, to the next slide.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. You're good, I can say it. Are you planning any stairs to go with this wall?
No.
And then what would be behind you? Like, when, if this carried through, the next slot behind there, would it just kind of end?
So?
I'm just trying to get my bearings here.
Sure, so where this is, where this is, you know, the, the intent of this is to come off of the side of the back of the house, come up along Jones Street, and it's actually going to wrap in to the back of our garage that is, that comes up to, to really the back of the house. So it doesn't even go to, it's not even going to the garage on the other side that would actually be in the alleyway back there between Seventh and Eighth, you know, if that makes sense. So, so it really is all contained to the backside of the yard.
And, and the alley is directly behind that, so, okay.
Yeah, the alley, yeah, because it comes up to really the, the front of the garage, so to speak, when, when you come directly out of the back of the house, and then there's the garage and then the alley.
Okay. So then would there be distance between the wall and the sidewalk? It would have to be maintained as grass or anything?
So I, I guess, I guess the answer to that would be, I mean, the intent of this would be to go really pretty much up to the sidewalk, maybe an inch, an inch or two off of that. So if it went right up to it, there would not be grass to maintain. If there was any type of gap, then yes, there would be grass to maintain, which we will take the responsibility of ensuring that's maintained the same way we are already doing for, for the other side of the sidewalk rest, which, in all honesty, I didn't know whose responsibility that was, but, but we.
Yours.
We've been, okay, all right, well, that's good, that's good. So yes, that, that's being maintained, yes.
Okay. Tina, just so you know, if you cross over Eighth, there is a house there that has a wall that comes right up to the pavement. And what he is saying here is that he is aligning his wall with that wall.
Understood. I, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand the whole, and forgive me because this isn't my strength, but I'm trying to understand the whole idea of right-of-way and the idea that the, Mr. O'Hanlon thought that that was all his property, but there's right-of-way there. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand it. That's why I'm asking questions that way.
Eric, can you help her out with that one?
Yes, so any road, the right-of-way basically is the area of land that is for public use. So that is where you put your roads, your sidewalks, your utilities. And the main part of what's in the right-of-way is the roadway. But, you know, you also have rooms at the sides where you would, you know, if you needed to expand sidewalks or you needed to widen the road, like, that type of use. And the property line goes up to that right-of-way line. You know, the homeowner is responsible for maintaining the land within the right-of-way. It's just as part of having frontage on a public right-of-way. But your property line itself ends at the edge of that right-of-way. In this case, his deed has a property line and it is indicated as the edge of the property of the right-of-way.
Thank you.
I'm okay with this.
Okay. Does anyone else on council have questions?
I don't have a question. I think what you want to do, Mr. O'Hanlon, makes sense for a young family, just to fence it in, in that respect. And at this point, it just complies with what's going on in the neighborhood. So I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you.
And Ike, I don't have no problem with that. I think it is a great idea.
Okay, just a reminder for council, this is a no vote, no vote item this evening, it's just discussion. It will come back in front of us at a later date. So does anyone else on council have any questions? So this is, this is a council decision, not a zoning decision, correct?
No, this one is a variance application to the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, this is not, council will not be voting on this item. This is a discussion item only, and after it's presented to council, it will go in front of the zoning hearing board.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else have questions? Okay, so we will move on to the next item.
Thank you for your time.
You're so welcome. Thank you for coming on. The next item on the agenda is 1023 Fayette Street zoning hearing board application. Mr. Johnson, if you would like to introduce Mr. Genenberg?
Yes. Thank you. So this application, 1023 Fayette, you are, uh, should be relatively familiar with this. They had received zoning approval back in 2018 to allow for the expansion of the existing office building at 11th and Fayette from one story and 960 square feet to two stories and 3,200 square feet. The, when that zoning was approved, uh, it was based on allowing eight parking spaces in lieu of 16 parking spaces. The applicant, uh, has since then has finalized the mix of uses that will be in this, in this building, 1,600 square feet of office, 1,600 square feet of retail in connection with the lighting business. And that would require 18 parking spaces. So the applicant really, if this, is asking the zoning hearing board to allow a reduction of off-street parking from 18 to eight parking spaces, which is a relatively minor, uh, variation of the previous zoning relief that they were granted. With that, I'll turn off if you have any questions. Otherwise, the applicant can give his presentation.
So I'm Andrew Sloan, I'm the attorney for, uh, Mr. Denenberg. He's also here and can answer any questions that the, the committee has, or council has, rather. I think that that was summed up pretty well. I mean, the only thing I have to add really is that, you know, our justification here is, you know, it's only two spots, it's very minimal compared to, you know, what was required under the original zoning and when it was contemplated to be just business offices. And the nature of, uh, Mr. Denver's business, that of a, a lighting showroom, is something that we don't believe is going to have a major impact on parking. The lighting, lighting showrooms traditionally have very low foot traffic. And additionally, right now, uh, the showroom is only available to the public by appointment only, therefore limiting the amount of necessary parking. And that, I think that with the, the addition of, you know, an increase in online sales becoming more popular during the pandemic and moving forward, the applicant has reason to believe that very few of these requested eight spots will ever even be occupied at the same time. Does the board have any questions?
It doesn't seem like anyone has any question.
I think most of us know the store very well.
Yes.
I just have one, sorry. So is the intention to move from Rid, your Ridge Pike store to Conshohocken?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, thank. So this isn't a second store, this is, this would be your primary location?
Yes, we'd be relocating, correct.
And prior to COVID, how much of your business was online versus onsite?
Uh, actually, most of our business is commercial, uh, all over the country. I would say less than 10% is, is retail.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else on council have any questions for Mr. Denenberg?
No.
Well, thank you very much for coming in this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Good night.
The next item on the agenda is council business, conducting interviews for board and commission vacancies. The first applicant is Mr. Chimaluski interviewing for the zoning hearing board. Are you here, Mr. Chimaluski? And did I say that correctly?
Uh, yes, I am here and it's Shimaleski, but close.
Shimaleski. Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in and your, and your interest for the zoning hearing board. I will start, um, why do you want to serve as a member of the zoning hearing board?
So I, I want to contribute to the community. I want to become part of what's going on in the neighborhood. And when I look around for opportunities to do that, I saw the zoning hearing board and I believe it fits with my experience and the business that I do currently.
What is that business?
So I am a division manager, salesperson for a company called Pennsylvania Flooring. We are one of the big five, uh, commercial flooring companies in this market, the market being Eastern Pennsylvania and South Jersey. Through, through that experience, through that work, which I've been doing close to 15 years, I have a lot of experience with commercial construction, contracts, zoning ordinances, uh, understanding, design intent, um, a lot of reading documents and, and applying what those documents mean to what we're doing in the rural world.
Do you have any zoning experience at all?
I do not, uh, other than to interpret ordinances and apply them to commercial flooring applications.
Good.
Hi, Alan. Right. Hi, Alan, this is Jane Flanagan. I have a question. I would imagine in your field, you have experience with blueprints, so that would be valuable, correct?
Yes, uh, every day. That's dealing with, most of our customers are general contractors. So we get drawings through the general contractors from the architects. We interpret those drawings and specifications and then apply them. I currently, it's mostly with flooring, but I also read and understand plumbing, electrical and, and things like that. Have a broad range to understand most.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Alan, it's Tina Sokolowski. So you have comfort in reviewing ordinances from an end-user perspective? Tell me a little bit about how you, you would go about, if we selected you, learning the ropes of becoming a zoning hearing board member.
Well, I'd imagine the first step would be talking to other people who are on the board already and learning from them. Uh, I believe my guidance will be the documents, the ordinances as created by Borough Council. But yeah, it would really be learning from and reaching out to people who do this and/or have experience doing it in the past.
Great, thank you.
Is there anything in particular, an issue that you believe needs to be addressed by the zoning hearing board?
Uh, no, I don't have anything, uh, any, I don't have any, a, any topic that I'm trying to push. I'm really coming into this as a clean slate and, and want to help out.
That's great.
Have you had the opportunity to, um, participate, watch, or anything from our own zoning hearing board meetings over the last several months?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Though I do have experience with, uh, boards, both with, uh, I was on a board of a nonprofit organization. Uh, I currently am the president of the homeowners association of that board in the community that I live in now.
Okay, great.
I just have one more question. What do you think your role, your role is as a member of the zoning hearing board?
I think that my role would be to listen to the applicants, review the ordinances and apply the intent of the ordinances as they were written down and recorded by the Borough Council.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much for your interest in, in applying for the zoning hearing board. I know, I'm sure all council truly does appreciate it.
Well, it's my pleasure and I, I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. So the next person, um, would be Mr. Curtis Miller. He's interviewing for the EAC and the zoning hearing board. Um, Mr. Miller, are you here?
Yes, I'm on.
Mr. Miller, you might just need to speak up. I think you're there, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry, I always, I forget these headphones are like this. I'm sorry about that. Hello.
Thank you.
Curtis, uh, hi, uh, thanks for being here. I, what, what is, uh, from the environmental, um, perspective, what is something you see as a, as a need for the EAC and Conshokken?
So I think one thing would be, um, kind of improving usership of our public spaces. I know there's, um, a park very close to where I reside in the borough and just kind of promoting the use of our public spaces in the borough, as well as improving the kind of maintenance of, uh, for example, leaves right now and ensuring that things are cleaned up properly and in a timely fashion.
I have no problem with that.
What do you think your, um, role is as a member of the EAC?
So I think part of that is, um, getting back to the, the answer that I just provided through, um, promoting the use of our, of our public spaces. Um, and in doing that, a, a large role in that would be making sure that they are, um, friendly to the public, they're clean, they're neat, um, and visually appealing.
And the same question for the zoning hearing board.
I think for the zoning hearing board, um, and I, I wasn't even sure if I was able to serve on both, but they're both something that interests me. Um, and I think to clarify, if I am only able to serve on one, the Environmental Advisory Council would be preferred. But for the zoning hearing board, I think my, my role in that would be to provide a fair hearing and consideration for the applicants, but also ensure that in doing so, the, the needs and desires of the, the borough residents are, are heard as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
No.
Curtis, have you attended any, um, EAC meetings or talked with any EAC members to, um, understand what their strategy is currently? And then what strategically moving forward, they would be looking to, um, do and how you would be able to fit into that?
I have not had an opportunity to unfortunately yet.
Okay.
Any other questions from council?
No.
Okay, Curtis, thank you for your time this evening and your interest in both committees. We truly appreciate it. And I, I would suggest that you reach out maybe to the mayor or members of the EAC and familiar, familiarize yourself with what they're doing. So, but thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next person is Ms. Jessica Sullivan, interviewing for the Marywood Park House Committee. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. How is everybody?
Everybody is good. So Jessica, why would you like to be on the Marywood Park House Committee?
Well, right now I live across the street from the Fellowship House on Harry Street. And I go there every day, multiple times a day with my daughter to play and use the park. So I have a strong interest in just what's going on across the streets and, um, you know, making sure it's the best place for everybody in the community to hang out.
How are we doing? You're not getting it. How are we doing with that?
Oh, it's great.
Good answer.
Hi, Jessica, this is Jane Flanagan, one of the councilwomen. My question would be, the Marywood Park Commission actually involves the care of the, not just the park. The park is part of the Parks and Recs Commission, but the Marywood Park Commission takes care of Marywood's estate as it is, which is the home. So part of our current situation is we've planned major renovations. And I'd be very happy to share those plans with you. And how would you feel about getting involved in something along that scale?
Yes, I, I did know that that was part of what the commission did. And I have always loved architecture and, um, house things. And I, I tried to join the Friends of the Marywood Park House. Right before COVID started, I was supposed to attend the first meeting that got canceled. So I was trying to get involved, but then, you know, everything shut down.
Right.
That's.
Oh, we're having you apply for this, this committee. Um, council, anyone else have any questions for Jessica?
No.
No?
No.
Well, Jessica, thank you so much for your interest in coming in this evening and, and talking with us all. We truly do appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much for considering me.
Oh, you're so welcome. Thank you. The next person. We need to do an interview for, um, the reappointment of Mr. Eckert for the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Eckert, are you here this evening? Barty?
President Leonard, I do not believe that he is on the call. So what we will do is we will reach out to Mr. Eckert and try to reschedule him prior to the December voting meeting. So with all of these candidates, both the candidates for consideration for appointments to board and commissions and any reappointments to current members on boards and commissions, um, we are attempting to schedule these virtual interviews so that you would consider appointments at the 1216 meeting in preparation for 2021.
Okay, that's great. I again would like to thank everyone this evening that did come in and showed interest in our boards and committees. Because it's, it's great to see the public involved and we do need, uh, people to be on them. So thank you very much. So we will move on now to manager matters and I will turn that over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. The first item is to consider approving the fire stipend distributions for 2020. So as everyone is aware, there was $40,000 budgeted in 2020 for fire stipend distributions. There is a list that was provided in your meeting packets of all of the officers, all of the firefighters, um, who have met the expectations of the fire stipend program. There will be a presentation of those individuals with their names at the public meeting on the 18th. However, for this evening, which you will vote on, on the 18th as well, is just that we will be releasing the funds that will be a not-to-exceed of $40,000 based off of what was budgeted in 2020 for the stipend program. Are there any questions on the stipend program in particular and/or the release of funds?
No.
And just to highlight, these are our volunteer firefighters who receive points on a regular basis for participation in various fire service tasks over the course of 2020. Um, I will say that it has been successful. Um, and the number of members who have taken part in the program and really the level of participation is, is something that is, is very nice to see. So it was a, a, a successful program in 2020. We look forward to continuing doing that. And again, it'll be on your agenda on the 18th.
Okay, thank you, Steph.
Next item is to consider approving a Saint Matthews fee waiver request for the use of the A field for outdoor church. Next item is to consider approving a St. Matthew's fee waiver request for the use of the A field for outdoor church services on November 1st and November 8th. I would need a motion, if so inclined.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is to consider approving zoning escrow releases, so this is a new process that's in front of you. Like we do with our land development escrows, we are, we are releasing zoning escrows through a process that was implemented over the course of this year. And any amounts that are being released from the escrow accounts themselves will be in front of you for consideration. So I'm going to read the motion, which is going to include each of the applications and the amount, and then just ask for a motion. So the motion is to approve the release of the following zoning escrow deposits. 826, 828 Fayette Street in the amount of $320.66, 12 West 8th Avenue in the amount of $124.62, 110, 161 Washington Street in the amount of $814.32, 7274 Poplar Street in the amount of $696.19, and 301, 303 West 4th Avenue in the amount of $181.99. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Ike.
Second, Sokolowski.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, and President Leonard, I just have one item that needs to be added to the agenda, it's the extension of the local disaster emergency resolution. We are, it expired on November 4th, and we are looking to extend it until December 2nd. So if inclined, I would just need a motion to approve Resolution 202031, approving an extension of the local disaster emergency declaration through December 2nd, 2020.
May I just ask a question about that?
Yes.
Is there a reason we would not extend it through December at this point?
Mr. Peters, do you want to ask, answer that?
No, I, I think that unfortunately, I do not see a reason why you could not do this. So if you're inclined, you could extend it through December, it would be fine.
To the 31st?
Extend it through the 1st of January.
Well, actually, no, let's, let's make sure we extend it to a meeting date.
So it would be, so I think what you'd be looking for is the January date, if that's what you're requesting, so it would be January 6th.
That's perfect.
Mr. Peters, is that in line with the state, would that be in line with the state?
Yes.
If the state changed things effective 2021, that would be January 1, would we still be okay going a week out?
You, you, you would be, yes. And, and also, I should say that, that more and more municipalities are doing what Tina just suggested, so you're in line.
I would make a motion that we extend it through to the January date.
Okay.
Second.
Ike.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Checo. So the next item on the agenda is council member and mayor matters, Mayor Arrington?
Thank you, President Leonard. So a few things for, for everyone tonight. The first is that there is a way to recycle all of the yard signs that are all over the borough. So the closest drop-off to us is the White Marsh Township Building. That's at 616 West Germantown Pike on Lafayette Hill, and if you drive up, you'll see signs pointing you there, and you can, you can dump all the signs in there, and they'll be recycled. That is going from today until November 12th. So, so please recycle those signs. And the second thing is, back when we had the tropical storm come through, one of our residents lost her dog, Miller, and our officer Perez found the dog and was able to get her in contact. So she came by today to thank him in person and to buy the department lunch, so, thank you for her. Yeah, and he's 14 years old, so thank you to her, and I feel like we say this a lot, but thank you to Officer Perez as well, we know how dedicated he is to our, our residents. And then the last thing is, Sarah and I have been putting on a series of suicide prevention and awareness classes. This is a QPR training, this is probably the fourth one we've done in the last few years. It's a beginner class, it's an intro class for anybody to see the signs of suicide, to find resources for suicide, and to know what to do if, if you're ever in a situation with someone who may be contemplating that. We're hosting that at the VFW, we hope if the weather holds, it'll be outside in the parking lot at the VFW on November 8th, from 12:30 to 2:30. And it is a beginner class, you don't need any special training whatsoever to, to join us, it's also free of charge. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor Arrington.
The address for the place to recycle the signs?
Sure, it, it's the White Marsh Township Building, and that's at 616 West Germantown Pike in Lafayette Hill.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokely?
Yes, I have one thing we talked about in the budget, about repairing the cracks in South Cliff basketball courts. I don't think we can wait till January to take care of them cracks, I think we need to take care of it as soon as possible. The less moisture that gets down in them cracks, the better off we'll be. So I, I think we need to get that done as soon as possible, before the bad weather comes.
Thanks, Bob, yes, we have, Lauren has reached out and has, is in the process of receiving quotes, and I know that her and Ray and, and I are in the process of discussing timelines. So we will take that feedback and try to make it work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. Ms. Barton?
I don't really have anything except to thank everybody in my ward who came out and voted yesterday. It was a long and tiring day, but a fun day, and everybody was well behaved, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thank you, Anita. Flanagan?
I have nothing additional tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tino?
I do not either, thank you.
Ike?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Sokolowski?
I just wanted to thank the residents who participated in our virtual Halloween costume event. We've got some great pictures to judge from, and I'm excited to be able to share that with everyone as we move forward. But we had a nice turnout, and hopefully we'll continue in that same way through our virtual events as we move through the next holiday season, part of the season.
Thank you. Is Chief Metz with us this evening?
I am, Pauline, I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I didn't miss anybody? Okay, so we'll go, Brittany, do we have public comment at this time?
No, we didn't receive any written comments.
I see that we do have one person that wants to comment. Can you state your name and address? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Judy Smith, I live at 117 West 4th Avenue, right around the corner from Mr. Graveney's place of business, or his, his tenant's place of business at 319 Forest. Mr. Graveney, are you still here? Not sure if he is. Well, my question for him would be the numbers of trucks that might potentially be at this business, because if one is in the garage and being worked on, what about those that are being brought in awaiting repair or renovation for the interior? So if he's not going to be using, and he may potentially be using, street parking that was dedicated to the residents in that residential area, of which is right around the corner from me. So the impact of parking is a concern, and I don't know if the company has a plan B for that possibility, that there might be one, more than one truck needing attention at that place? And have they thought of other possible places to park the overflow?
Judy, this is Karen Tutino.
This is Tom Graveney, I am here. If you would like me to answer that question?
Yes, please, Mr. Graveney.
Okay, Todd, first of all, the area in that garage will hold three vans. And he's never, he's never expected to have more than two when he's finishing up the first, there'll be no outside activities as far as other trucks go, or anything like that. He picks, from what I understand, he picks these up at the airport, and he customizes them, the interior only, not the exterior, just the interior, and then brings them back. I'm not aware if there's going to be any parking like that.
Good to know, thank you very much, sir. That's all, that's the only question I have.
Thank you, Mr. Graveney. Karen, did you have something to add?
No, thank you, I was just going, I didn't realize Mr. Graveney was still on the call, and I was going to respond with my understanding to Judy.
Pauline, I got to go there.
Go ahead.
Wednesday is Veterans Day, so let's go all over the veterans, including myself, a good hand, thank you.
Thank you, Ike. Mr. Graveney, thank you for staying for the questions from public comment. Ms. Smith, do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
No, I wish the tenant good luck.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Okay, well, with that, I will say, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, good evening.
Good evening, Ike.